Thank you. Good evening. We've already opened the meeting before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. Per governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable, practicable, I'm sorry. And just a reminder for anyone who might want to join us in the audience, the public is invited to join all the remote public sessions, but please note that when there's an executive session, it will need to be closed to the public once it begins by law. And this evening, we are, as usual, we will have, we'll be live streaming on MCTV. We'll be making a recording of the meeting, which will be available on MCTV at a later point and on the Gil-Montague Regional School District website as well. And please, if you're in our Zoom audience, please remember to keep your video and your microphone turned off. We appreciate that. This is the part where we have public participation policy, BEDH. It has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely. Members of the public who wish to participate are welcome, and they generally let us know ahead of time. We've not received any requests tonight, but I'm also reminding the public that on our agendas that are posted on our website, we will have the links for the public to join us in our Zoom meeting, either on computer or on their iPhone. And there's also a mobile, so it's available whenever people would like to. So, good evening, everyone, and important events. That would be you, Brian.
Could everyone just mute?
Yes, somebody needs to make sure that their microphone is muted. If you're in the audience, you definitely need to have your microphone off, please, because we can hear everything. Thank you.
Both on the agenda, as well as in my superintendent's report, I had that the next meeting of the pandemic response advisory committee would be tomorrow, March 24th. However, due to conflicts, we'll need to postpone that meeting and move it to the 31st. We had met each of the last two weeks rather than meeting every other week, though, so it's not like we've not been in contact with each other. Wednesday, April 7th, is a district-wide early release day for professional development. The Sheffield School Council meets Thursday, April 8th, at 3:30 PM. The next Friends of Hillcrest meeting is planned for Monday, April 12th, at 5:00 PM. The next Friends of Sheffield meeting is planned for Wednesday, April 28th, at 4:45 PM, with April vacation being held April 19th, April 23rd. I do want to add that last Wednesday, March 17th, the district held its first presentation on the Internet Safety for Children of All Ages. Our family engagement coordinator, Stacy Langneck, invited parents, invited presenters from the Northwest District Attorney's Office and the Child's Advocacy Center. And through our district task force consisting of principals, counselors, technologists, and our school resource officer, we were able to ask questions of the presenters about the importance of staying in touch with our children's activities on the Internet, applying the safety measures. We've always taught them about stranger danger, even in cyberspace, and how always to be vigilant about ensuring a balance in our children's lives when it comes to screen time and their use of technology. Cue to Stacy and members of the task force who pulled that together. Wednesday, March 24th, we'll be meeting with some members of the high school staff to discuss end-of-year activities, including senior awards, discussion about the ideas for potential prom, as the advisory from the Department of Education on graduation is included in the school committee packet. And the district met with Montague Town Administrator Steve Ellis and Kat Allen from the Franklin Regional Council of Governments to discuss possible uses of funding for the cannabis impact fee, and I'll talk about that a bit later when I talk about addressing pandemic learning laws.
Thank you. Student representative, I think I see Haley is with us this evening.
I am, hi. So, I'll start off on a state level. As I'm sure you guys know, we normally go to Hyannis, and that can't happen this year, but we do have a date. We're going to be doing this over Zoom over the course of two days. So, the evening of April 9th will start off from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, and then we'll have all-day April 10th, from 10:00 AM to 4:30 PM. So, it won't be exactly the same, but we'll have a keynote speaker and workshop and awards, and so it'll be a fun experience and we'll still learn a lot. And then, for our own council, we're going to be doing different fun activities within our council. We want to be doing more bonding with each other instead of just business. So, we're doing different "who" or trivia or "would you rather" questions to kind of get to know each other a bit better, and that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate it, Haley.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, back to you, the superintendent's report.
I'm actually going to begin the superintendent's report with recognition. If I could ask high school world language teacher Megan Ben Dixon to come out on the camera. I think she was in there. Megan, you're here, right? There you are.
Hi, Megan.
So, I'm very proud to introduce Megan Ben Dixon, who's the Gil-Montague recipient of the Grin Spoon Award for Excellence in Teaching for the 2021 school year. I'm so proud to work with so many staff and parents who recognize that excellence in teaching is directly attached to the impact that educators have on their own students' growth and the adult life opportunities they have before them. I just want to read a few excerpts from a letter from a parent below that I think truly highlight an outstanding example of how Ms. Ben Dixon has really successfully incorporated 21st century learning skills so thoroughly into her instructional practices in a way that has really helped students to attach to a very complex career trajectory in a way that's very successful directly as a result of Megan's work, even though it's not in her field. But this is from a parent in the district. "I just seen my son had the privilege of having Megan Ben Dixon for all four years of Latin. For his four years in high school, he had many fantastic teachers. None stood out the way Megan did. I remember a particular phrase he would use when he would share about the, share about school for the day. He would open the conversation with, 'I wish everyone could teach the way Magistrate does. Makes learning so much fun.'" He would go on and gush about what she had done that day or week to engage and challenge the kids in the class. Examples of how she would integrate differentiated assignments and use a variety of teaching methods which helped him to grow as a learner and even challenged him. He shared how he made him suck it up in group projects, which was his least favorite way to produce work, because he hated to be graded on other people's work. This actually taught him how to work collaboratively. It was a conversation that we had recently that made me, as a parent, really appreciate her. Again, referred back to her and said he wished his college professors knew how to teach like Magistrate. He also talked about how much he owed her for her, for his success in college. He feels that she showed him how to work on group projects and collaborate, which he has had to use in college often. He is now in his second co-op program as an electrical engineer intern, and he works on group projects all the time. She made this difference for him. She is truly gifted and inspiring and promotes all the qualities of a Grin Spoon winner. We're honored to have such a well-respected guild and dedicated colleague selected as the Gil-Montague recipient of the Grin Spoon Award for Excellence in Teaching. Congratulations and thank you, Megan Ben Dixon.
Thank you. I see we have Ms. Menard with us as well, Joanie Menard, the high school principal. Would you like to say a few words?
I absolutely would. I'm thrilled. Megan is so deserving. She embodies what the award is all about. She's a fantastic teacher that engages students in very creative ways. I wish I had her when I was younger, because I could actually speak up for and language them, but she really hooks them and interests them, but more importantly, she builds a relationship with every single student, and that's why they will do everything and anything for her, because they just, they treasure her and they appreciate her and love her. I can't say enough about her, Megan. I'm thrilled to have you as a teacher at our school. You're fantastic. Let's keep up the good work. You're well-deserving.
Thank you. Congratulations, Megan. Would you like to say anything?
I'm just, I was really surprised and really honored to receive the award. I did not expect it and to hear that Riley, who wrote those, who had those things to say about me, had those things to say, and just knowing that, like, that there is a difference to be made is really encouraging, especially this year when it's been a, it's been a hard year of teaching, I'll be honest. And so, getting, like, having a little bit of boost and encouragement has really, really been lovely and wonderful. So, thank you very much for all of the kind words. It really, it means a lot.
Again, congratulations.
Standing, Megan. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, too.
Thank you.
Now, I included an update from the governor that affected March, Monday, March 22nd. All communities in Massachusetts moved into step one of Phase Four of the state's reopening plan. This allows several different changes in capacity in indoor and outdoor venues. In particular, indoor stadiums, arenas, ballparks have a strict 12% capacity limit. So, if the Red Sox don't play as well, they, you know, will probably won't hit that 12% anyway. So, also effective on March 22nd, gathering limits for event venues and public settings will increase to 100 people indoors, 150 people outdoors. And additionally, dance floors will be permitted at weddings and other events only, although there are some limitations, and that's part of what we're asking for from the commissioner, is to, the advisory that we received only addressed graduation, and it's difficult to glean information in there that we could apply to a potential prom or some sort of an event that we might be able to allow seniors to be able to have toward the end of the year socially. So, we're still looking for some information from the Department of Education on that. In addition, the travel order was rescinded and turned into a travel advisory. And now, for Massachusetts residents who leave the state for more than 24 hours, still advised to get a negative COVID result and quarantine for up to 10 days if they don't. But there's no longer a fine being held over people's heads for not complying. In terms of the COVID data of the 11 towns that we review, there are no towns in the red, and the highest percent positivity rate, there are just two towns in the yellow greenfield with 24 cases, only a 1.17 positivity rate, Underland with 21, and just a 0.97% positivity rate. Though, I think part of the reason for the low positivity rates are the high rates of testing that are occurring, and helpful try to keep the virus off of our campuses at cool. Terms of staffing, so we've changed one of the facility staff thing that we had to be a school year custodial position rather than just as a substitute position in hopes that we would get more applicants for that potential position. And we do still have one facility substitute position posted. We still need two high school certified nurses assistants. We are still looking for a high school special education teacher and just recently posted a position for a high school one-to-one power professional. We are in the process of interviewing an elementary science teacher. The rotation of specialist program, programming, trying to put together, we have some really good ideas, the elementary principals and director of teaching and learning have put together, related to field-based opportunities for kids to have a little bit more of an opportunity to explore scientific concepts. And of course, we still always need substitutes in all of our positions. I did want to add a little pandemic-related information. The district nurses that really have done a phenomenal job of, led by Melissa Bednarski, and to date, as of the date of this report, had administered approximately 300 swabs so far to students and staff in our pool testing program, and we are pleased to report that so far, all of those tests have come back negative. The district is planning to make pool testing a regular requirement for participating in athletics, because those students obviously leave the district and are in close contact with kids from other districts. As of right now, Ms. Bednarski and I are working to get hand or paper copies of consents for pool testing into the hands of athletes and encouraging parents to sign up. The nurses are also planning on sending them a consent form to increase the number of students who are able to participate in pool testing. This was done at one school, and the paper consent form, consent forms dramatically increased the number of families who committed to participate in the pool testing, as well as the binax testing. That's a great adjustment made by Ms. Bednarski and the nurses. And now, many, almost all staff are participating or have consented to participate in the, in the testing, and we're hopeful that everybody will. I did want to add one piece that came out in the advisory on March 9th. I did not share with the committee, because I did not see it, but just as we were beginning having discussions about retention, the commissioner issued the following. "In the fall of 2021, C anticipates a full in-person return across all grade levels. Work with districts and schools to focus on teaching grade-level content with appropriate scaffolds for all learners. We also support districts in meeting the needs of the whole child, including mental and physical health, in addition to accelerated instruction and extra help in core academic subjects. More guidance on fall planning will come in the future." As we stated last spring, heading into the 2021 school year, C discourages retaining students at the prior grade level. This includes students of first grade age whose parents or guardians may have kept them home from kindergarten this year. These students should be placed in the first grade in the fall, even if they chose to remain unenrolled for kindergarten. But I just, I did want to share that word-for-word language, because we discussed that with the administrative team as they're going into student support team meetings and IEP or 504 meetings, that we should not be recommending retention. And I just wanted that to be clear to everybody and also share that with the committee. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Does anyone have any questions for Brian on his report?
Thank you.
Bill?
I had just one on the potential for having outdoor gatherings or whatever, but particularly outdoors as it relates to probably graduation, but might even be the prom. Is there any definition to square footage relative to an outdoor event? Because if you took the whole football field, for example, there's all kinds of ways to spread 150 people or 500 people around, so you got 20 feet between you, I would bet.
Yeah, I think once, once those plans are put in place, we would run them past the local Board of Health and have them review them to make sure that, you know, we are in compliance with what we, what we've proposed. But in terms of the social distancing, yeah, that's a, that's a part of the plan, and it is, it is indicated in the advisory that, not just in terms of the physical distancing and sitting, but also in a, it gives clear direction around approaching to receive awards or anything like that and avoiding contact and sharing microphones and so forth. So, all of that stuff is included, but, you know, I believe there'll be probably more than 150 people at graduation, if you include all of the students and everything. So, we're going to need to gather that plan and extend it to the Board of Health so that they have an opportunity to review it in advance and give us any advice if we need to do something different.
Just to follow up again on what you just said, in terms of, there's a lot of discussion right now about the absolute need to, for consistent cleaning of surfaces as opposed to aerosols. And if you hadn't, if you were able to enforce a, a keep-your-mask-on-at-the-microwave order, you might not have to worry about cleaning the surface of a mic between speakers, but that's not for me to determine. It's just, there's a lot of information out there now relative to, because of the issue of spacing and what is safe or not safe bringing people back. And it seems to me that cleaning surfaces has, which is not necessarily irrelevant, but it's not at the top of the list.
Right. I think the microphone's probably the big one, and then, you know, not shaking hands and so forth will, you know, that, those are things that will still, even this year, still be in place, but I think advisory is, from DSC, is pretty clear advice on, or expectations for how schools should conduct it, schools and colleges.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Brian. Business and Operations Report, Joanne.
Sure. Our insurance rates have come out, and GIC, we budgeted for our health insurance. We budgeted a 4% increase, and those numbers came in an average of about 6%. So, we have a little bit of room in those lines, because we do budget for a handful of new retirees and new employees, and people change plans all the time. So, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to manage all of our insurance rates within our insurance lines, but we'll be keeping an eye on that throughout the year. Blue Cross Dental rates, they came in actually as a decrease of 2%. That doesn't impact our budget, it just impacts the employees of the retirees' share, because we pay a set dollar amount for our share of those plans. Grants. So, at the last meeting, I talked a little bit about grants, and I said I would share with you the details of all the different grants that we have this year. And so, there's five pages that list all of the grants. You can see all of the CARES Act money. To start off the list, we have the reopening grant. That's the grant that we spent, we bought the Plexiglas shields, we bought the air purifiers technology from that one. The cafeteria CARES Act money was extra money we received for purposes of using it to get food to kids. So, we used it for coolers, we used it for shelf-stable milk, things like that, and we do have a little bit left of that money. The COVID Prevention Fund, this is a new grant that just came out, and so, this is one, I think Brian's going to talk about it a little bit later. We're going to try to get a spring into reading program going, and we can use it for some tutoring. Not sure what else. Diane, you've been involved in that one, too. We've been talking about what to you, how to use those funds.
Yeah, I think we talked about tutoring. We talked about doing a district-wide literacy reading initiative, you know, kind of a community read, encouraging parents and children, high schoolers, preschoolers, like, I actually tested out some ideas today when I was the principal at Sheffield, and boy, the kids were excited. They were very excited. We, what we're thinking about doing this Read Across America campaign, where kids go from Boston to Los Angeles, and of course, we don't want to get stuck in Los Angeles. We want to be able to get back to Massachusetts again, you know, with so many miles for reading logs. And so, you know, really looking at how we can support that, having children picking out high-quality literacy items, you know, books are always more exciting if you're picking your books and not being assigned a book, right? So, so there's a number of different things. I know Christine Lamoche has been involved, Joanne, myself, and we just have to kind of pull together a number of those ideas and, but I test-marketed it with some focus groups today at Sheffield. My focus groups were in.
Great.
All right. So, that's, that's that one grant, and some of these grants, they, money has to be spent by the end of June. So, that's one of them. The money has to be gone by the end of June. The other CARES Act grant that we have was the code number 113, and that grant can be used into next year as well. And so, that's the grant that we're using to help support some additional positions that we need next year. And then, of course, the CARES Act money from the towns of Gil-Montague and Irving, that helped pay for our, our unit work and our air, air handling units. The Summer Learning Grant was last summer. We were able to put a program together and have students come onsite under the tents. And then, we have another CARES Act grant, 115, and that is, that money goes right through fiscal '23, or goes into fiscal '23. So, we'll have more time to use that grant. So, we haven't made any plans for it. We haven't even applied for it yet. We're just going to wait until fiscal '22 to apply. We have the option of applying in fiscal '21 or waiting. So, we're going to wait till '22 to apply for it and just see what, we don't know what our numbers are going to look like in fiscal '23 yet, or in fiscal '24. So, you know, we really just need to hold on to some of this money if our chapter 70 isn't going to increase. And then, we have a lot of our regular grants, Title II, we have every year, and that's a professional development grant. We use it for our mentor teachers. That grant, it goes down a little bit every single year. Title III is for our English learners. We have money. We get that through the collaborative. We're a part of their program. The School Regionalization Grant is going to be a continued study of regionalization that the committee is doing. CFCE is an early childhood grant that provides programming for our younger students, even before they come to school with us. The Special Ed Allocation Grant provides funds to ensure that eligible students with disabilities receive the education that they deserve and need. And Special Ed Early Childhood is for early childhood needs and special ed. That Program Improvement is a grant to help us improve some program, improve programming, and an early childhood special ed improved program. Title I, you may be familiar with the Title I Reading Program, reading and math. So, that program funds that. I don't need to go through every single one, but I can talk about a couple. We have a couple of, a grant for innovative pathways for the high school. That program is for our first program that we began. Student and Family Support is a Safe Schools Initiative. Diane got that grant put together recently, and that's money for this school year. Gleam is to grow literacy, a growing literacy program. So, we'll be working toward that this year in order to apply for a grant next year for more money. The Summer Extension, Summer Expansion, that's a nutrition grant that we apply for every year. We probably won't be receiving the $11,000. I think we're going to receive something closer to $6,000. And nutritional equipment, we did apply for that grant. We're not sure if we're going to get it. There were a lot of applicants. They usually are able to give out maybe 50 awards, and they ended up receiving about over 100 applicants. So, we're hopeful that we're one of the chosen few. Project Bread was another food service grant that we had to help buy accounting materials for our food service program to distribute the meals. Rural School Aid, that's another fund that we receive based on our poverty levels and our, our rural nature. Some schools that are more rural receive a larger amount per pupil, but $44,000 we have for that. So, we're hoping we're going to be able to use some of those funds for our spring into reading and our literacy programs that we hope to get into place soon. And then, Breakfast in the Classroom was an older grant, and the Food and Security Grant that we had talked about to get our refrigerated vans for the cafeteria. So, a lot of grants this year, the totals nearly to $11,000. So a lot of grants this year, the totals nearly $2 million where normally we have close to $1 million. So those funds, you know, we've been able to really put some programming together to impact, you know, to help with our learning loss. We use money for the buildings to get them ready and get the materials that we needed. So a lot of good grants that are out there. Anyone have any questions on any of the grants or any of that?
Anything at all for Joanne? I just need to say, Joanne, I know it's got to be a whole lot of extra work getting all these grants in the first place and then keeping them organized and deciding what gets spent where. And we definitely appreciate the extra work that goes into it.
Yes, it's been a challenge. It's been a challenge. But, you know, it's good to have those funds. One other thing I have for you, well, you're going to have the warrants to approve. And then you also have the transfers from February. So you can see those, it's two pages. This month, we did a few transfers to cover some overages and just to get money in the lines where we needed them. So a few more transfers than normal. And that is all I have besides the two warrants.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments for Joanne before we move on? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
School committee reports, the only specific one this evening is the warrant subcommittee approval. We have two accounts payable warrants, which are to pay the district's bills. The first is number 3124 dated 3/24/2021 in the amount of $154,834.39. The second warrant is also an accounts payable, number 3125 dated 3/24/2021 for the amount of $5,522.43. And I will entertain a motion to approve those. If we can approve it together, that would be great. Okay, I think I got Cassie and she won. And was Heather this a second?
It was a quick second.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion from Cassie, a second from Heather. All those in favor? Okay, looks like we are good. Thank you. Moving on to the business section this evening. First item is a review and discussion of school reopening plans. Brian?
Well, I just have two quick slides that I want to share. Make sure this is open. And so the first of the two slides that I wanted to share that I put this out, these are the plans that we have been working on as an administrative team. To have Monday, April 5th, K through sixth grade across the district start in person, full time learning, five days a week with half day. Free school still in place. Kindergarten would go from its partial day, as it is currently, back to full day, starting on Monday, April 5th. On Wednesday, April 7th, the 7 through 12 students in cohort A and cohort AB will be in person. And the following Wednesday, cohort B and cohort AB will be in person. Way they're somewhat equalized, the 7 through 12 will still be in hybrid, but this gives them an opportunity to gain for the additional, additional in-person day. And then on Monday, April 26th, I'm proposing that that be the point at which we bring back our 7 through 12 students in for in-person learning. The key elements of the changes to in-person learning that are different than, different than hybrid is that Wednesdays, we return to in-person learning. So we no longer have a remote day or a remote half day, starting on April 7th. Until all staff will report to work on campus. Wednesdays will be full school days unless they are scheduled on the district calendar, the early release days for professional development. desks will need to be a minimum of three feet apart and still maintain six feet from teachers' desks. And eating still remains at six feet of social distance. And so as a result of that, one of the biggest things that schools have begun to work on and some are close to completion now. We're coming up with plans to be able to eat safely, feed the kids safely at six feet and make sure that staff are also keeping themselves at six feet when they're eating as we have a larger number of students coming into the building. Some, we're still working on, there are not very, we're excited to say that there are not very many families who are staying remote and those that are of serious issues in, you know, health concerns in the home or with the student individually. And, you know, of course, somebody under 16 still is not able to get vaccine. And so we understand 6 through 12, it will be really challenging. Those students will need to stay connected in that synchronous environment. But we're looking at K through 5, trying to work out a teacher to be able to work with remote students across schools so that those students have a more robust experience than, in particular for kindergarten teachers and kindergarten in first grade, it is very difficult to do each kid synchronously in that environment. So we wanted to make sure that, or at least try to ensure that those families who had to stay remote are still going to get a more robust experience than they might have otherwise and not get stuck doing tons and tons of asynchronous work, which would be very much like school. So I appreciate the, the work being done right now by the elementary principals to begin to address those concerns. And we should be putting out something relatively soon to families of parents in the schools.
Anyone, thank you, Brian. Anyone have any questions or comments for Brian so far? Cassie?
Well, as far as the 6 through 12 goes, I mean, I would assume that the Google classrooms will still be utilized.
By the teachers even for the in-person. I'm just thinking, my two oldest will be staying remote because my middle son has some significant health issues that make him high risk. But I would just, you know, I just know the teachers in the district and I know that I can't imagine that any of them would, for remote, you know, for students staying remote suddenly be like, okay, they're remote, so we're not going to worry about them. You know, I just feel, I know, obviously K through, through fifth grade is, you know, you worry a little bit more because they're less independent. But I think, you know, the commissioner kind of wanted districts to put out that like, if you stay remote, you're kind of on your own. But I just want to make sure like that's, that's not the case for anyone.
We're actually seeking to, what I was trying to explain is we're seeking to avoid that, you know. So because I did that out in the survey, I did have at least one parent who had inquired about, so, you know, does this mean my kid's not going to get as good of an education? And while there are challenges to it, we're also trying to work to assist the teachers, in particular of the younger students, be able to overcome that challenge so that they can focus on the kids that they have in front of them while not having less of an experience for those students who have to stay remote.
Yeah, I just know, you know, the commissioner of education obviously put it out there because he wants to encourage people to, to send their kids back to school full time. But I, for other families out there that may be concerned, I just wanted to, you know, put that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Brian, anything else in that?
No, I think that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Next item under business is the open Gill School Committee representative seat. In order to fill Timmy Smith's unexpired term, which expires actually with the next election in May, if anyone who resides in Gill is interested in filling that seat, they may submit to the school committee a letter of interest. It can be sent to the superintendent's office. That seat is, will only be filled until the town election and that town election is scheduled for Tuesday, May 18th in 2021. But that is available if anyone is interested. Okay, anything about that? Okay, the next item, we need to review and vote to approve the school committee handbook updates. Brian, are you going to cover that or someone else?
Yeah, actually, I wanted to thank Diane Ellis for the work she did in coordinating with the attorneys to get these done. These, she also has in as part of her report, I did not include the entire handbooks, but rather just put together the two pieces of common language together in a summary with the fact changes involved. So the summary that has the yellow highlighting first up, it's the process for procedures relating to suspension under Mass General law, chapter 7137 H and a half. And, and also completed the process of putting together a shared folder in, in the admin team, Google share, has templates for all of the documents that need to be used to explain hearing and everything. So those are, those are all updated. We may need to do some professional development, just to make sure that we're in compliance with the laws on suspension and make sure that we read through this. Make certain that we're familiar with what has changed and what's different. The second item, that leads to, those are all related to the procedures for suspension or long, short-term suspension, long-term suspension or expulsion. And that language will be integrated into each of those handbooks upon your approval. And then there's one paragraph at the end that is actually in another section. And that's in addition to the bullying policy, which identifies staff members as individuals who could also be looked at as aggressors in a bullying campaign. And so there's just a paragraph that comes, that came directly from the attorneys around adding that into our existing bullying policy. And do you think that there's anything that I could add to that?
No, I, I wanted to say though, I think though in practice, our principals follow the correct procedures. I think the trouble is with having five different handbooks is having those updates and language be consistently made in five different documents. So part of our corrective action plan in moving forward is having a system so that those, as, as practices evolve or as legal statute changes for school districts in any number of areas, that we have an automatic way of just updating our documents. So again, I think the principals have followed the procedures. We certainly, it's just, it's just a matter of making sure that our language is consistent and really that we want our families to know this language, that it's published in our documents, that it's on our websites, publicly available. So overall, I think it's been a good process. And, yeah.
Diane.
Any questions or comments about that? You know, we have, as Brian said, we have the entire changes and they will be included in all the school handbooks.
I got one question.
No.
I didn't read all of the highlighted stuff and, but down to the end where it gets to the expulsion issue. And it's highlighted, but it's also got a red line through it. Is that struck?
Yes, red, but as the line through it is, is language that's changed. And so we just, yeah, we just took the section, the attorneys made the change and we forwarded the whole section. So you could see, the committee could also see in the summary what was removed or replaced.
Thank you, that's a good clarification. Thanks. Anything else about that? And thank you for doing that. I think that's, that's good to know that it's all updated and everything's in the handbook as it needs be. And we didn't include all of the handbooks, all of the information from all the handbooks, because we generally will look at those at a different date. We just wanted to make sure that the updated changes were put in as soon as possible. Yes, Bill?
I have, it's not directly related to what you're doing, but in terms, it is related to keeping things updated. And I've been doing some, looking into parts of our website specifically on the courses, the study. And the list there is from 2018, 2019. Am I in the wrong section or is this another, is this an example of updating not being up to date?
Yeah, well, I think that's probably an example without knowing specifically where you're referring to. The way that you described it, Bill, it sounds like there's something. And we did find more than a handful of stuff on the website as we've gone through and are beginning a process to update and also have something that we'll be bringing, we'd already brought to school committee in the past, we've run by the teachers association, we'll be bringing at a future meeting, which also address, helps us to be able to address some of our communications protocols, processes and trying to keep our, our website updated more with greater frequency and getting it as close to real time as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I think all the necessary work that's gone in with accommodating the difficulties of school education during COVID has kind of made other things take a bit of a backseat, I'm hoping when we get.
Oh, you froze on us.
Jane, you're frozen.
Oh, regularly.
We didn't hear anything you just said because you went out.
Probably not important, but then, right, we will, we will try to go back to updating our policies in general and going through them in general as soon as that's more possible.
Wow. You got most of it in that time though.
Maybe she's just not meant to talk about it.
The Zoom gods are not working with her tonight.
Are you back, Jane?
Am I still unstable? Am I still unstable?
No, you're good now.
I just, you know, there's a gremlin tonight at work somewhere. Mike?
Do we need a motion for this?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Is anything else about that, Brian? Are we okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mike, very much. I'll enter a motion to approve the school handbook updates. Mike, thank you.
Second, Heather.
Second, Heather, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. The next item on the list, a vote on a memorandum of agreement for the GMEA, the teachers bargaining unit. Brian, do you want to tell us how you'd like that agreement worded?
Yeah, I'm just asking the committee to, to approve the memorandum of agreement for the Gill Montague Education Association related to a long-term substitute position.
Okay, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll move it.
Okay, Bill, thank you. Did I hear Heather there with a second? Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving that? That looks unanimous. Thank you. The next item we have is a discussion and vote on the district transportation policy. I think, you know, there've just been some questions about the transportation policy and we thought it might be a good idea to begin examining it and then continue the discussion as we get further along in the year. I believe Joanne. Are you sharing with us a map? Of the location of students in the district?
Yes, I can share a map. It's just Montague, but I will share it. Tina, can I share my screen?
Yes, yes, you can. Just make sure that it's open first.
Okay.
And then you can do a share screen.
So this is a map of the Sheffield and Hillcrest walk zone. So the, the outline shows where the walk zone is. And all the people in here shows where our students live. Now, I wasn't able to pull just the Hillcrest and the Sheffield students. So this is all students, so it might look a little busy. But this, this shows you where the students are grouped. You can see there's large groups here downtown. And in the patch over here. I don't think you can see where I'm pointing, but. You know, where those sections of town are. But you know, then there's students that live out near Montague City Road or on Montague City Road, and they are walkers for Hillcrest and Sheffield. Students that live all the way up near Hillside Road would be walkers or near the high school. Near the fire station. So. This is a huge area of students that, you know, to add busing for all of these areas would be difficult. Some areas have sidewalks, some areas don't have sidewalks. In some cases, it would mean adding buses. We've talked about this before. You know, years ago, there, they, they did some double bus runs, but I believe the mileage limitations years ago, like, you know, 25, 30 years ago, the mileage limitation for us in the district was probably a mile, not a mile and a half. And so the policy is a mile and a half. And one of the reasons the policy follows that is because that's what the state reimburses for. Any students that live a mile and a half or more from the school can get transportation. If we reduce that to a mile, I can't show you what that looks like, but. I'm sure I could at another time if I were able to pull that. You know, you can just imagine what that, that mile circle would look like. And so where we would need to bring buses to and, you know, if the buses have room. And even switching it to a mile wouldn't necessarily get downtown students bussed to Sheffield. It might get all the downtown students bussed to Hillcrest or most of them, but not necessarily to Sheffield. It would certainly include the patch, you know, the outer areas there. So this is just a map to give you an idea of the walk zone and what the areas are. And this is just for those two schools. So you can have the conversation and I can stop sharing my screen if you'd like. So that way you can see all each other.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joanne. Cassie?
So I'm just thinking with everything currently going on with COVID and transportation regulations and spacing on busing, if it's wise to start talking about the changing the policy at all, given how these. Guidelines are just temporary. I'm not sure if that makes sense. I mean, I think we should always be talking about this and looking to update it, but I just don't know if like changing anything or, or beginning a discussion about changing anything should happen right now with the COVID guidelines for, you know, seating on buses.
Right, I understand. I think, I mean, I think it's come up because it always does come up. It's a complicated question and it's always, it can be challenging for parents to understand. It's challenging for me. I, I think I've just finally begun to understand it. I just assumed the simplest way would be for the state to reimburse us for however many buses we have and however many students are eligible. And then we just can fill the other seats as we need to with kids, but that's not allowed.
I know.
Just one of those rules that's very hard. And I think while I don't see us necessarily, it's up to the group, but I don't see us necessarily changing anything this minute. I just think it's important to keep the information out there and the question out there. It's not that we don't realize it's challenging. It's just complex to try to find a large solution. And as Joanne said, we would also need to look at the, the middle school, high school and Gill in terms of if there were busing changes. I think it's tricky. Anyone else?
Me.
Oh, thank you, Bill.
The, the little people over in Riverside, do they represent high school kids or middle school kids that would have to be walking to the high school from there? Or were they outside the zone altogether?
No, that's a walk zone for Sheffield and Hillcrest. The high school would have a different walk zone because their mile and a half borders would be different.
Are there kids from Riverside going to Sheffield and Hillcrest?
There may be, but that's a different school. So we wouldn't pick up students in Gill to go to Sheffield and Hillcrest.
Okay, but just.
Wouldn't be bussed.
All right. But if they're high school kids, they might have to walk.
Um, no, because high school would, the bubble would look different for the high school because the school's farther away from that.
Okay, so this is focused more on.
Sheffield and Hillcrest. Yes.
My misunderstanding. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question to.
Mike?
Yeah, back in the day, students who were within the mile and a half were allowed to pay to ride. And that's probably illegal nowadays, but I just thought I'd throw it out there. It's something the district used to do. You could actually buy a seat on the bus.
Yeah. Yep, that would be another option. That's not illegal. We could do that. But we don't charge for preschool. We don't charge for athletics. You know, I think it'd be difficult for us to charge for busing. And it's also hard to collect on. You know, it's hard to collect the money, the kids that need it the most maybe aren't the ones that could pay for it.
I think that's probably why it was done the way it's.
Yeah.
That, that, that's a good point that it used to be. And I do remember, as Joanne said, I do remember when it was a one mile that the state reimbursed for instead of a mile and a half, which was certainly a better arrangement. But we don't get to control all those changes sadly.
Right, I'm not sure that the state reimbursed for the mile and a half, but it might've been the school committee had a policy that they would bus within a mile, but the state still reimbursed the mile and a half. We can make any decision we want as a school. Right, every school can bus however they want to bus, but you know, then it starts impacting the reimbursement that you get. Because each, each child has to, that rides on the bus has to have some dollar amount tied to their seat on the bus. And so when you have half a bus of non-reimbursable students and half a bus of reimbursable students, you're going to lose half your reimbursement for that bus.
Right, I, I understand that now. Carly?
I don't think you're. I phrase it differently. Back in the, at a different time when we had exclusions for kids within a half a mile, I'm pretty sure kindergarten or first grade perhaps, but whether we did or not doesn't matter. The issue is not that we get half a reimbursement. The issue is, as I want to think of it, is half the kids don't get reimbursed. So we're subsidizing them. We're paying for it. And that has to be clearly understood. It's not that we're, something is being withheld from us. It's that we're choosing to pay to support that. And that's how I prefer to look at it. Thanks.
Thanks. Carly?
What if there was a situation where like, like what Joanne was saying, like if half the kids that were riding the bus were, they qualified for the reimbursement and the other half didn't. If there's some sort of list going on of like, okay, if we can have 20 kids on the bus and only 15 of them or whatever, I don't know how it would go. But if 15 of them were reimbursements and then there was five seats left, like, could we try to do a first come, first serve signup of some sort? Or just something where it's like, if those seats are available, why not? And if it's on the route, why not? But obviously, if it's a money thing where some of these that are picking up seats for kids that are reimbursement qualified and whatnot, they just don't have it. Like they don't get the spot. I don't know. Just trying to figure something out. Cause I see, I mean, I know my children didn't qualify for a while. And I mean, that hill is just so crazy coming up from like the patch and everything like that. And I mean, these kids are little and there are major side or crosswalks they have to cross. And just to think of little six and seven year olds having to make those choices and just making sure they're paying attention just stresses me out as a mom. So, you know, if there's, I don't know if then you have an, you know, an inequity and whatnot. But I mean, if there's available space on a bus, why can't we do something with that available space?
Can you explain that better, Joanne? I.
Yeah.
I can't explain it well.
So. And I have to write it down, otherwise I start getting myself mixed up. So if a bus, let's say a bus costs $60 and there are 60 students that ride on the bus. So that means each student costs $1. And so if we get 75% reimbursement. I don't even want to do the math, right? So we get 75% of $60. That's what we would get. How much, Mike?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. So we get $45 for that bus. Now, if half of those kids were not reimbursable and half of those kids were reimbursable, there's different ways of doing this, but the simplest way is head count. So that means 30 of the kids are reimbursable and, and so they're eligible. And 30 kids are not eligible for reimbursement. Now, we're going to get 75% of us $30 on that bus. So 2250 we get instead. So on the revenue side of our budget, when we build our budget, on the revenue side next year, not this year, next year, we're going to get 2250 instead of $45. And then if we do that two times or three times, because we have multiple buses that are picking up kids that are too close, we're losing 50,000 because, because those numbers, the 60, that's more like 60,000.
Yeah, I guess, because what I, what I'm thinking about is like, okay, if you've got a bus of kids that do qualify, for example, like my children, where we live, they qualify. They like barely qualify now. They on the buses, there's only 10 kids on the bus. They're driving right past the patch. Like if there's only 10 kids that were signed up, but there's 60 seats. Why couldn't we have, as long as the, the kids that qualify for the reimbursement get their seats first? Then, you know, then if it's kids that don't qualify, aren't getting their seats, I guess that's where I'm just kind of like, well, we're going right by there. If we got the space. But I guess, right, if there's a dollar amount that has to be attached to a child's seat, you know, you would lose, which is so silly, because then it's just an empty space.
Well, and you know, it's a decision that we have to make, but the state says you can bus anyone you want. You want to bus all the kids that live closer, you can do it, but we're not going to pay for it, is how it comes from the state. So we can do it. So if we have a bus that holds 60 kids, there's 10 reimbursable kids on there and we add 50 as the bus is going by because there's empty seats. Now we have 50 non-reimbursable kids and 10 reimbursable kids. So that means when we get our reimbursement, we're going to get $7.50 instead of $45. So I don't think we can afford that.
Okay, now I get it. This is why I don't do your job.
It took a while. She's had to tell me, boy.
No, now I, now I get it.
So, and, and I've even tried to look at these numbers and say, you know, it costs more money to drive a kid 10 miles than it does to drive a kid one mile. And so maybe I tie a different amount of money to each student based on how many miles they live from the school. And so I've done that and I continue to do it when we have our kindergartners that were only a half a mile from the school and we're busing them. I'm applying a different rate to those students, but we can't. We can't pick up with the existing buses. We couldn't pick up everybody that we drive by because there's not enough seats on the bus. But then you have to pick and choose who are you picking up and who are you not picking up?
Bill?
I think, I think Joanne's doing a great job explaining all of this and you're doing a great job in general. But I think what Kaylee is trying to say is you must have buses. Your example is simply you have 60 kids on a bus. And the bus costs $60, but if you have only 30 kids on that same bus, it's still going to cost you $60.
Yep. And we'll still get $45 in reimbursement for that bus, even if there's only 30 kids on it. We'll still get $45 in reimbursement, even if there's only 10 kids on it.
So the reimbursement is based on the bus carrying eligible children and the cost of the bus.
Right.
Flat out.
Yep.
And, and that's great because I didn't understand it that way. So you just ruined my argument.
Whatever we can do, Bill, whatever we can do to help. Exactly. It's not the simplest thing in the world. I'm with Carly. I'm like, look, there's empty seats. There's kids. Let's just put them on. What, what do you got here?
Right. And if all of our kids fit on the buses that we have available to us, you know, we might be able to figure out how to do that, but all of our kids don't fit on the buses that we have.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, and especially now, if we're, you know, we're trying to keep kids farther apart in school. We don't want to cram them all into buses.
Right, right. That was a good point Cassie made too. But I mean, I think it, it doesn't hurt to have the discussion. It's a complicated issue. And it isn't that we're not trying to think of a miraculous solution, but we'll, we'll just keep trying, you know? Anyone else? Any questions, comments or solutions? Okay, thanks, Joanne. We, we need somebody to explain some of these rules. Thank you. Um, next on the agenda.
Are you back?
Yes, finally. I'm getting tired of waiting to be recognized by the universe. I believe Diane is going to give us an update on pupil services.
Sure. Um, so I just have to acknowledge the bus issue. As a, as a parent who didn't have the opportunity to pay to put my child on a bus and I, you know, just the argument that it does feel wrong to see a bus go by that's not fully occupied. So, um. I think I better understand it now, but I still don't agree with it.
Right, right.
I want the state to recognize those children as the bus is going by them and it's pouring rain and it's freezing out and they need to get to school. So, yes, I did submit a school committee report to Brian. We talked about tiered focus monitoring. We talked about the handbooks, which was on my report. I wanted to share with the committee and members of the community that we are providing some English language tutoring for our elementary kindergarten students. I know Joanne had mentioned our Title III grant money earlier this evening and we are using funds from that grant to basically provide a full day for our kindergartners who were in A, B cohorts, or some of them actually are in A or B cohorts. Most of our L students, we've tried to have four days a week, you know, for language development purposes. But we have hired a tutor and because of spaces at a premium, we actually have a small group of Hillcrest kindergartners being walked over from Hillcrest to Sheffield and they are occupying a space in the afternoons at Sheffield. And we have six of these youngsters receiving additional services. As members of the committee know, a lot of deliberation and thought went into that kindergarten schedule and kindergarten has been half day in this hybrid model. And so for the English learners, this has allowed them some additional in-person time. Brian may have mentioned earlier, and if not, I do have this updated on the website. We have a kindergarten question and answer event for a virtual event Wednesday, April 7th from 6:30 to 7:30 PM. So Sarah Burstein, myself, Sixty, our family engagement coordinator, will be at this virtual event. And it's just to help new kindergarten families know what to expect when you're expecting to send a kid to kindergarten next year. And registration is underway. So we're starting to get registrations for new kindergartners for next year. And I wanted to just, the Safe Schools Grant, I'm going to just mention quickly on the topic of grants and money. We do, we do have a Safe Schools Continuation Grant and in consultation with Joni Menard at Secondary Building and the Social Justice and Equity Group that has been meeting, there's discussion on using these funds to do a private viewing for our students to see the film, I'm Not a Racist, Am I? And this will be followed up with a facilitator, facilitating small group discussion. And that, that is scheduled as well as a whole grade team building ropes course for the ninth graders, part of, you know, helping build a sense of community within that ninth grade is ninth grade is considered a transitional year. And if students feel positive and connected in ninth grade, they tend to have a more positive four-year high school experience and graduation. So they're looking at doing this ropes course and potentially even making it an annual event. In addition, some of these Safe Schools monies, we are going to be using to, to train student leaders at Sheffield and basically teaching fourth grade students peer mediation skills. So when they rise to fifth grade in the fall and they can be in a leadership role at Sheffield. Melissa Petra and I had a wonderful conversation about that. And this work was planned last year and then things were kind of put to a stop with COVID. So we're happy to be sort of picking up the pieces of programming that was kind of underway last year. I, Brian mentioned the prevention monies from the town of Montague, so which was also my report. So I, we did have a meeting about that today and I will defer to Brian if there's more that he wants to say. But, and then the last thing I wanted to share with this committee is that really been involved in a lot of family engagement activities. I've been doing some strategic planning in this area and everything from building our communications on the website under Student Services to a district brochure for family engagement. So when families come to register, having print materials that share information about our curriculum programs, about our schools. We've developed a special education parent advisory council brochure. We've had a special ed parent workshop back in February, a transition planning workshop earlier this month where we had the Department Development, Developmental Services come. And then I guess the last piece I wanted to share is that I've been working with a team over at Hillcrest with Sarah Burstein, the speech language pathologist, a special education teacher, Michelle Terrell, and the preschool teachers on a year-long coaching institute on building equitable supports for children with disabilities. So really looking at our partnering with families whose children may evident some lagging developmental skill and really looking at sort of the inclusive nature in which we can provide services to students so that their, their parents really feel like they have the tools they need to promote those developmental schools that we are engaged with families on kind of an open partnership on, on how to best support needs that we learn from our parents on how they, how they support their children. And I'm just excited about it. It's, it's been exciting to see the teachers involved in this and we've, we, we're really looking at retooling the ways in which we communicate with families around the eligibility team process for special education, which can be incredibly overwhelming for a family to be getting this news and getting all these evaluations. And, and so the teachers have had some wonderful insights and that work has been ongoing. But that Building Equitable Supports group is focused on family engagement. My office has been focused on family engagement, so much so that we've re, I don't know if I have this permission or not, but I've renamed my office to be the Student Services and Family Engagement Office. So Mr. Toome, if you go to the website, under Student Services and Family Engagement, I'm hoping that our materials are up to date. I've been really investing in trying to make sort of my corner, if you will, of the website be current and, and accessible to our families. Because you never know when somebody's on their phone or they're searching the website. It's sort of one way of putting out information to our stakeholders, to our families, to our community about the work that we do. And sometimes people don't know if they have a question, but if they can search material online, they can find something. It just is a way of, of being able to provide that level of support. And then the last thing I wanted to mention to this group is we're actually going to be doing a communication survey to our families to try to really look at the ways in which parents prefer to be communicated. So, you know, I know I came before this committee before to look at sort of social media and trying to think about how we might improve on some of our district communication. But we wanted to just do a survey of families. So you should, probably within the next few days, I'll be launching that survey to put out to families. Do people prefer email? Do they prefer phone calls? Do they prefer to go to our website? Do they prefer to go to the Positive Gil Montague site for, for information? But just again, making sure that we're engaging with our families in ways that are most preferred by them. And then the last thing I wanted to say, and I think, Brian, when we were recognizing Megan Bendixson earlier, my daughter had Megan for four years in high school. And I started to learn a little Latin because my daughter would come home so excited. And I think it's actually pronounced McGistra. McGistra, I think that is her title. And so I, I was writing notes earlier and I was like Chloe Ellis McGistra, because she was thrilled to know that she was the recipient of the Greenspoon Award. And we're, we're very happy to have honored her. So thank you to this committee for just allowing me a chance to give you some updates. And if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Anything at the moment for Diane?
Well, I think that's a pretty clear indication as to how superior Megan Bendixson is as a teacher as compared to my high school Latin teacher, right?
Latin is not as live a language as some possibly are, I understand. But thank you, Diane. That's really a lot of good information for us to have. And certainly if anyone has any questions at a later point, if it occurs to you, please just contact Diane, let her know. Thank you again. Brian, next item, discussion about issues of equity. Anything new to add?
There's nothing new to add related to issues of equity. Specifically, this, the remainder of what I have for presentation is circling back to addressing pandemic learning loss. And so I've together a couple of slides and I can do some follow up on the Cannabis Impact Fund and how we're trying to collaborate to have that address some very specific concerns that I've shared with some areas that we've collaborated on with some area superintendents. So I'm going to share my screen again. I just want to make sure that I have this open. Oh, I did want to provide an update that, the committee that we've posted for several weeks now and have only one interested person for the April Vacation School Camp. As I called around to other area districts as well as districts in other parts of the state, other superintendents are dealing with the same issue that they're not able to find people who are applying. In some cases, you know, certainly with our own staff, we certainly understand the fatigue and the desire to get some well-deserved rest and recharging and certainly don't fault the outstanding people who work in our district. And we'd love to have work on, on the vacation for that, especially in these circumstances. We will continue planning with Parks and Recreation and other local partners for expanded summer programming. Know that Diane and Ellis and Christine Lamoges are continuing conversations with Parks and Recreation. As Diane had mentioned, there's a small cohort of kindergarten English language learners have been given additional support. And that's running, is that four days a week, Diane? Yeah, okay. And so that's running four days a week and we'll see whether or not that is something that we can continue when we go full time in person. And then Joanne had mentioned the Spring Into Reading Proposal. We're hopeful to be able to work, get this going for April vacation. And the idea really is encourage students to select their own books and spend some money actually purchasing books so that students have, you know, an old school paperback or hard copy in their hand instead of looking at something on a computer screen and hopefully on the April vacation or during the summer, getting off of a computer screen and looking at a, an old school pages, you know, by the river or hanging outside somewhere on a, on a day that's as beautiful as today was. We're also looking at pulling in community partners such as the local libraries for the summer reading program and building some incentives in to inspire students to accelerate reading and read as much as they can. Anne?
Yeah, and I didn't have a chance to share with you, Brian. I'm also beginning the process of working with principals and looking to analyze data to, to see our students with disabilities who may need some additional compensatory service time, recruiting time. We are, you know, it's, it is hard to necessarily match personnel with the need, but so we may need to contract with outside vendors or providers. But if, if a student wasn't able to effectively, if you're thinking of a three-year-old who wasn't perhaps able to effectively access speech through telepractice on the computer because of the developmental age of the child. So are we thinking, does that child need some additional speech time that we would then need to contract with and provide so that we can help make up some of that learning loss or that compensatory service time for our students with disabilities? So that, that work is undergoing, we're, we're undergoing that work at this time right now to try to really make sure that we're doing the best we can for our students.
Thanks, Anne. Um, so our first meeting, which we had last week, we had a second meeting today with Devos from the town of Montague and Pat Allen from FERCOG, the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. We also met with the Franklin County Technical School Superintendent, Rick Martin was included in that. And Steve explained to us how we began brainstorming and having, helping us have an understanding of the process where the town of Montague can authorize funding for evidence-based prevention programs that the schools put forth. And so because there is a cannabis business in town required to pay into this impact fee as part of law, and then it's up to the, the town to decide how that money would be used for these purposes. One of the other things that we discussed was even the nature of isolation of students and families throughout pandemic and worse it sometimes than others. We certainly anticipate a likelihood of increased substance use during the pandemic. Certain students returning to school now and in the fall of 2021 are way more likely to need access to more extensive screening and support programming to address what we anticipate is a, potentially a significant increase in substance use because of the, you know, the general challenge of circumstances in being able to supervise students in the presence of cannabis within the community. We have some things in the district and Methallen was able to, as well as Methalis were able to describe to me that the, in our sixth, seventh and eighth grade, we have a program that's called, it's a life skills substance use program. And that curriculum integrated with SPERT or the Extreme Brief Intervention Referral to Treatment Program that's conducted by our nurses, as well as the data that we get from the Communities That Care Coalition Survey through FERCOG is all really good information. Unfortunately, I mean, we will get the data on the Communities That Care Coalition Survey heading into the fall, but we could already see in through our discussions that we're going to have a much more intensive need in the fall for probably more painted services than just in general having counselors. And so some of the things that we discussed included hiring a licensed drug and alcohol prevention counselor. Part-time, maybe that could be shared with Franklin County Tech. That way we'd be able to secure somebody and perhaps commit them to work one day in our district and one day in their district. So that rather than doing it on a fee-for-service basis, those people with their expertise in their field could also serve to help us, our student services team and other counseling groups. And even consider helping us look at elements of our handbook when it comes to substance use and possession, begin the process of dealing with it more as a health issue than as a need to be punitive about it. One of the programs that we've shared is called the Preventure Program. And it's targeted specifically at the ninth grade. We're going to spend a little bit more time looking into that. While it is a whole student mental health program, it has extensive substance use prevention elements that would really, really work well with the foundation from the life skills work kids do through their health classes in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And so that might give us an opportunity to keep a curriculum going that has, you know, allows us to be able to deal with triaging and educating simultaneously an entire grade of students. We're also posing that we add in Spanish-speaking counselors and identifying that as a specific need in our community and expand counselor time either through hiring additional counselors or making sure that we work with the Teachers Association to provide additional time and/or training for our existing counselors to be prepared to deliver any curriculum that we might bring into our school district. So I also want to add that one of the things that I proposed today to a group of people meeting about the, meeting about the impact money is the idea of working with the high school, Ms. Menard, working with Adam Graves, and then coming back to the committee to... to in-place a policy that allows students to self-report substance use or abuse with immunity from any type of sanction. So for example, if I had a substance use problem and I'm a student who plays on the baseball team, I could come in and report to any staff member in the building that I need help without, and, and bring that to the nurse and/or counselor who could connect me to a program without having to deal with an MIA chemical health violation or suspension from school. And I think that that's really important to consider because other, you know, if a kid happens to have a problem, and right now he knows that if he reports that problem, he's going to miss 25% of his baseball season, he's not going to report that. So we'll enter into discussion soon, and I hope that we can have something for the next school committee meeting to just add something to the student handbook around self-reporting and getting through, you know, it might be something that we can agree to do going forward. Because it's not like a student is necessarily getting caught doing something they're not supposed to be doing. They're coming forward with the best of intent and they're looking for help. And students should not be punished for that. The precedent for it is also already established through the expert recalls. As Melissa Bednarski assured me today, that anything that a student reports when they do those screenings are entirely confidential and students don't get punished for that. So just a summary of the types of things that we're working on right now and trying, we're pleased to have access to potentially more resources. We're just trying to find the best way to prioritize that. And then those things that fall out of those proposals for funding, we could look at being others of those through at one or more of the litany of grants that Joanne Blyer shared. Increase our counseling services, get more access to Spanish-speaking mental health support. And looking at the Preventure Curriculum as something that we may want to adopt for next year.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone have any questions or comments for Brian at this point?
Of course I do.
Thank you.
On the certified drug and alcohol prevention counselor, this or in general, many of the new counselors, is this a position that's filled by a social worker? Howard, what is, what is a certified drug and alcohol prevention person? And do we have some social workers or plan to have them employed? Because they're the type that searches out programs to advise people that are in trouble.
Diane can give you a better definition than I can.
So typically, someone who is a certified, is a master's level, either licensed independent clinical social worker or somebody who's a master's level MED or MAT, who's done the state licensing with a specialty in drug alcohol addictions. Right, and I, yeah, I, I had done my first masters in counseling, but I was not a drug alcohol, I was more of a child and adolescent counselor. That was my background. But I, some of my peers at that time went on to become career specialists in drug alcohol certified counselors. So it's just a specialty within the field, typically master's level. I don't know of any bachelor-level individuals.
Part of the, part of the idea, Bill, is to, you know, if, if we do find what we anticipate we're going to see, potentially with an increase in substance use or abuse amongst our students. And we're going to take the approach that we should be taking, which is dealing with it as a health issue and looking to get kids back on track. We need, we need a type of expertise as opposed to just having, we do also need additional counselors, but that's something that both Superintendent Martin from the tech school and I agreed with, because he and I have both had experience, positive experiences with students who have been connected as a result of something that may have happened at the school or even self-reporting with very positive results as opposed to dealing with it through counselors.
Sounds good to me.
Mike?
Some of these things are going to be in policy as well. So I would just advise that you keep in touch with MASC and MASSS as you're going along. Because we, obviously Jane was just talking about getting back to reviewing policies. It's very complex, especially around this stuff. So that would be a good resource for you, right? Because we never find it. And I'm sure they're, they're very aware, acutely aware. So just recommending that.
Thank you. That, that's a great suggestion. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Brian. Next on the agenda, we approve some minutes from school committee meetings. But I apologize, I would like us to postpone approving the minutes from February 23rd, 2021. There's something I need to add to it. So we can probably do that next time, but I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March 9th, 2021. I think it was Mike and was it Heather? Okay, thank you. Mike moved, Heather seconded, all those in favor? Okay. Thank you. Agenda requests are next. Please, anything you can think of that you'd like us to make sure and include? Let Brian, Cassie, or myself know by the Monday before our next meeting, the Monday, the week before our next meeting, when we usually meet Monday or Tuesday. Our next regular meetings are scheduled April 13th and April 27th, both virtually at 6:30. If there's an executive session, we'll meet earlier and that will be posted as such. Anything else that we might need to, Bill?
Yeah, on the last meeting we had, or some meeting, we had a brief discussion about whether or not the committee could come back to in-person. And there were very, you presented good reasons not to do it. But one thing I was, that did occur to me, because part of the reason not to do it is because of people coming into the school and wanting to limit access to the school, to the facilities in general. And an alternative could be that you do a combination. You have us meet in the building, but the meeting could still be remote for an audience. And I just wanted to bring that into the thought process that we had going a while ago.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, in that case, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. And Bill, thank you. All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
I'll check that website, Diane.